Okay, good evening. Welcome to Edson Town Council April 6th meeting. Mayor Zahara is not with us tonight. He is in a meeting with Minister MacGyver and Dr. Inshaw regarding vaccination rollouts. So I will be filling in. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the April 6th, 2021 regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Byer makes that motion. All in favor? Moved unanimously. May I get a motion that the minutes of the March 16th, 2021 regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson makes that motion. Any comments or concerns? All right, all in favor? Moved unanimously. All right, we have no public hearings, no delegations. Our first reading of bylaw 20. Can I get a motion that council give first reading to bylaw 2255? Amending by law 2106 to allow for a temporary change to the taxation due date and the penalty run dates for the year 2021 due to the global pandemic. Counselor Shannard makes that motion. Any comments or concerns? Is there any? Do we need a presentation on this, Ms. Bittner at all?
Through to the chair, no, I have no presentation. It's just the what is was discussed last week at committee. Similar to what we did last year. Delaying the tax due date to September and nearby the penalty dates after that.
Last chance for any comments or concerns? All right, I will call to I will call to or call the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Can I get a motion that council gives second reading to by law 2255? Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any comments or concerns? All in favor? So moved. And can I get a motion that by law 2255 be placed for a third reading? Counselor Curry will make that motion. Any comments or concerns? All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Now, can I get a motion that council give third reading to by law 2255 amending by law 2106 to allow for the temporary change to the taxation due date? And the penalty run dates for the year 2020 21 due to the global pandemic. Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any comments or concerns? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We get a reports from a report from administration on the signing authority policy LD4. Ms. Bittner, is that are you presenting anything or are we just going straight to the motion?
I believe the motion has to come first.
Oh, sorry. Can I get a motion that council adopt the amending signing authority policy LD4 as presented? Counselor Byer will make that motion?
But I don't really have a presentation either. We discussed this last week at committee as well, just helping to streamline some of our new electronic practices by amending the signing policy.
Any comments or concerns? All right, this is moving on quickly. I will call to vote. All in favor? Passed unanimously. All right, can I get a motion that council adopt the amended compensation policy management and professional staff HB5 as presented? Counselor Curry will make that motion. Is there a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, we discussed this at length a couple of weeks ago at committee. Council did was generally supportive at the time and asked for some clarifying information to that end. We've attached a glossary of terms as well as provided a very theoretical cost implication if we were to go with an all at once approach, which which is not the plan. This would. The enactment of this policy or the execution of this policy would always remain subordinate to budgetary implications.
Ms. Wilkinson or Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. I was just wondering, when were these salary bands? Ever reviewed like I know they were made when Bridget was here, but that's quite some time ago. Have they been reviewed and changed?
Through the chair to counsel Counselor Wilkinson. Yes, they were reviewed at the same time that we reviewed councils wages about a year and a half ago now. So the most recent data we have on file is for 2019. And at the time, we discovered that we were at the 42nd percentile, 42.7, I believe. And. And currently, under the current policy, those bands are frozen and not moving forward.
Follow up, Ms. Counselor Wilkinson?
For a follow up. I personally, because this is a budgetary item in the end, I would like to see just a copy of their renewed changes that you've made in those salary bands. I thought it was interesting before, like what were similar levels of equal quality? And also with the SPQ, I guess I have to decide on that. Do you have a list of what the job qualification was? Do you have a list of what they've done above and beyond the job qualifications for when you decide whether they get that or not? Like it can be very subjective unless there's some criteria for it. So I'm just wondering what your criteria was.
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson. On on the first question with wage ranges, we don't, we don't have those yet because it would be subject to budgetary consideration. So right now, the wage bands are the same that they've been, at least through the duration of my employment, which is just over two years now. So we don't, we haven't updated those because the current policy framework has not really created a contingency for that. To your second question, the SPQ. Very briefly, I will say the the current policy is very open ended. It's, you know, very much at the discretion of of the CAO. It doesn't really clarify clarify what. My hope, my plan would be to put the criteria within each job description so that it is clear cut and and everyone in the organization knows exactly what they need to do if they'd like to qualify for the SPQ.
Yeah, I would really appreciate an update like that. Thank you very much for that, Colin.
Counselor Shannard?
Hi, yes, through to the chair to Colin. I'm still I'm not in support of this. You've answered some of my questions and you keep referring to budget. So with the changes being made in this will affect the next budget, and I don't see the urgency in with the hiring of a new town manager. Plus, our planning may happen in the future. I would like to discuss this more, get more numbers, so I will not be supporting it.
Counselor Curry?
Um, to counsel, I will be supporting this because once again, it's not budget. It's a policy and everything that is decided is in budget time and we set a budget and then they decide. This is a policy that is basing what we believe we should be doing. And I think with all our decision making, it should be based on policy. So currently, we don't have a policy that decides how our salaries are done. And this allows us to have a policy as we do for everything else. It's not budgetary. Budgetary is when it comes to budget and then we decide whether or not as it's very clearly to me lined out in the policy here that the budgetary comes directly from us at budget time. So I will be supporting it because I believe we should have policies that direct how we make our decisions.
Counselor Shannard?
Just to follow up, I do understand policy, but I'm thinking the input, this is something we've talked about for some time. And once again, the policy and budgetary, there is some staff members that probably need it, but I don't see the urgency. So just to follow this up, I fully understand policy. I just believe I don't understand what the hurry is. We should be waiting and discussing it more with more questions answered.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks through the chair to counsel. My thoughts are quite similar to Counselor Curry's. I think the policy is is ideal. Also, something additional to that is that when we are looking at attracting employment from out of town, because perhaps maybe the town residents don't or the people applying locally may not have the right qualifications. When we're trying to encourage someone to move to our community, I feel that we need to be competitive with that. The vacation pilot project that we've just started is one method of compensation. Financial compensation is also something that needs to be considered. And I think targeting towards the 50th percentile is not an unreasonable method of compensation. I don't agree with being beyond that, but I think that in order to attract talented workforce and just like in any other place of employment, sometimes you have to pay a little bit more in order to attract those those workers as well. And we do have some key positions over the course of our term that in these roles that we've had challenges filling them. So I will be voting in favor of this policy because of that. Thanks.
Any other comments? Counselor Bevan?
Yeah, I do understand the policy here and that, and I do understand that we should be moving towards a 50 percentile here and that. And like Counselor Curry said, this is a policy here and that. We can go around all we want, but we don't have nothing for salaries, which most places you go to have a policy like this for the salaries for hiring or whatever that or bringing people in and that. So and I don't want to go all in at the, what was it 55,000 or whatever is at the time and that. I think we do it slowly here to get up to the 50 percentile. I would be fine with that, but I don't like the 56,200 reasonable high end estimate that, which could easily go higher than that. So I would like to see us just move forward with it a bit at a time here to get that 50%. Like when we had the most of the other areas are at 50% or a way lot better than that. So it is, I will support it.
All right, I'll give my just before I go, I'll give my two cents. I am in support of the wording of the policy, however, I will be voting against it. At previous conversations, council raised concerns about the wording that was removed from the policy. And we were assured it was being placed or it was already placed in other procedures and policy. And we were told that we would be provided that those procedures. And then a week later, now in our package, we're provided a glossary of terms. In my line of work, if you ask for a document to see a document and the other party agreed to provide it, and then a week later, they sent you a glossary of terms, it would be viewed as insulting. Or else it'd be viewed as trying to hide something. So I, if this motion is defeated, I would make an immediate motion that we see it again soon with full information on those procedures that we asked for. But in the meantime, I will be voting against it. Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I can't support the motion as is now because of the fact that there's no criteria really for evaluation and it's far too subjective. There has to be a different method.
Any other comments or concerns? Counselor Bevan?
Yeah, to the chair. Obviously, I didn't get something here that you had mentioned, Counselor Sorensen, about the glossary of terms here and that. That we got it, I did not get it and wasn't able to look at it. So I'm still trying to find it here on my page and I, it just doesn't show up here for me at all in that. So I'm not sure what you're talking about in that. But I mean, if it's we're missing something here and that, then I'm going to have to rethink of what's going on here and that for sure. Thank you.
Ms. Bittner?
What we presented today is is the policy. The procedure is a different kettle of fish. That's how we go about doing things. The policy is what council sets. And from our understanding, that was the philosophy of targeting the 50th percent, not immediately giving everybody the 50th percent. That that's that's not that's a that's a totally different issue. So the policy in front of you is just the policy is that our our philosophy is that we're going to go towards the 50th percentile. Procedural part of it, we can forward to you if you wish, but it's not really part of the policy. I think that's why it's not presented tonight, but that's not to say that that we can't make that a little clearer. Usually, procedure doesn't come through council to that extent where procedures are brought to you. That's more of an administration level. So that's why we've we've removed those from policy and procedure and separated those out. That's that'd be the reason why it's not attached here tonight, trying to get that 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 understanding of of those differences.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, when this originally did come up, it was brought to us and it was brought to us as to the different bands. That's why I would have a continued interest in that.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks through the chair to council. In all of other policies, it's generally frowned upon to have the procedures attached because procedures can change. There there are sometimes more than one way of doing things. And in my opinion, it's not councils prerogative to decide on which way that procedures should be done. That's an administrative task, in my opinion. It is a council, it's council's prerogative to set the budget. And if every council from today and into the future decide that they don't want to support the full budget that administration presents at that time of budget, then it is that time to to kind of reopen these discussions on on wages if it's if that makes sense. So I would prefer not to have the procedures attached. I am in support of having the glossary of terms access to us just because there there is some terminology issues that I think are quite helpful in just understanding the discussion. But I don't feel that procedures are appropriate to have attached to a policy.
I'll just comment and then go to Counselor Curry. I do do not want to approve the procedures. It was just raised at the previous meeting that we wanted to make sure that they were being addressed somewhere else. And and just to have the assurance that if we chop it out of this policy, we we have the assurance that it's already in another procedure. So I don't want it approved. I don't want it scheduled into the policy. I just wanted to see it. Counselor Curry?
Um, through the chair, I would just echo what Counselor Byer said. Once again, our prerogative is setting policy, not procedure. That's not our role. And I am comfortable with the way the policy is right now because it is based purely on our philosophy. And this isn't something that we haven't talked about before. We've talked about this numerous times. And so this isn't something unusual. It is a policy we're digging going into procedure, which I just don't agree with. And Counselor Bevan, it's page four and five underneath that were added that weren't there last year just in the package. There's four and five that just have the glossary procedural terms that we added back in.
Yeah, I still can't pull it up here. I'm on page two and that's as far as I can get, unfortunately.
Counselor Shannard?
Just a reminder to council, I totally agree. We do set policy, but it is our job to set policy. And when administration job is to give us the background information. So what I'm hearing is the ones not in favor saying we don't have enough information yet. And yes, we've talked about it lots, but I'll re repeat myself, there's no hurry. It's for next budget. So we are doing our job and we're looking for more information.
Any other comments or question? Okay, I will call the vote. All in favor? All opposed? That motion is defeated. Can I get a motion that council adopt the Edson West End Neighborhood Concept Plan as presented? Counselor Byer makes that motion? Ms. Chan, are you presenting or are we just going right to the?
I can just provide a brief overview. Good evening, council. As per council's directions to facilitate growth and also bring forth some planning practices to guide future development in the West End of the town. Over the course of the last year, Infisact Consulting was engaged in the developments of the West End Neighborhood Concept Plan, NCP. The concept plan is complete and was presented to council by Infisact at the Committee of the Hall on March 9, 2021. Please note that there is no changes were made after the presentation and the Neighborhood Concept Plan, NCP, is attached to the agenda package for council's consideration. Thank you, and we're open to any question council may have for administration.
Thank you. Counselor Shannard?
I'm going to ask the question again, though this concept plan is for Glenwood area, meaning north of 16. It does not affect south of 16. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Okay, through the chair to Mr. Ham possibly. Again, I was trying to do things and if you look, I've got three different maps and in all of them, it seems that the water catchment area for the stormwater seems to change. So I just need someone to explain that to me one more time. Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson. Thank you for noticing that the maps are all different. The maps are just a generalized concept for the catchment area and all any and all storm catchment for the entire concept area will be considered a subdivision by an engineer and peer reviewed outside of the organization. So that means that means that the where the ponds go will be engineered by the landowner and developer and and the town will approve and not the other way around.
Follow up, Counselor Wilkinson?
Yeah, first I'd like to say thanks for that, that it sounds good because on some of them, it says that all the landowners are going to pitch in and pay for this portion of land. And then on others, it sort of says three landowners will. So that's what worried me. So who is going to pay that part then? The development or the developer and the current landowner where it's planned? Or is this going to be a joint thing on the West End development?
Thank you, counselors through the chair. This, I mean, each each landowner, each developer will have to identify storm catchment and and runoff of their own of their own volition. But in saying that, the the concept here is a larger neighborhood concept plan to bring these landowners together in a in a unified front and and come up with a unified concept. So stormwater management will be handled from a unified sense. Otherwise, it will be broken out on an 8% basis per landowner and based on their topography. So that's the best way I can answer it. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's an answer. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call this motion vote. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Move on. Can I get a motion that council adopt the community services fee assistance pilot program policy CP8 as presented? Counselor Curry makes that motion? Do we have a?
I'd really agree with Mr. Shram to start us off with this one.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to revert to Ms. Hobel's kind of her project and we'll let Krista take lead on this.
Great, thank you, Chair and Council for having me tonight. Back in fall of 2020, I had come to you guys with a staff report, just giving you an overview of what other communities of our size have done for a fee assistance program in their communities. And so we had discussed a few different methods there and the general consensus seemed to be that a moving forward with a lump sum credit approach for this program would be the best way to move forward and with the least amount of barriers for our community. So that is what I ran with and have created a policy and application form and postcard to support the program. And it would be using the funds from the COVID relief reserve to fund the project for one year for our community. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Counselor Curry?
Through the chair, thank you, Krista, for the presentation. I had a quick question about, sorry, let me just get to it. With what it could be used for? Sorry, I'm pulling it up on the computer and I had it tagged on my iPad, but I'm using that for Zoom. What it could be used for, there's just a comment about no facility rentals, sorry, except for group rentals, facility rentals and private rentals. And I just had a question about that about, and I'm sorry, we might have said that, but just that with our current situation, where the only way to access our facility is through rentals. So I was just, if you could just go into more detail about the reasoning for that. And if there's any way that we could to counsel modify that a little bit during the COVID state, just knowing that that would mean they can't use any of our facilities in our current situation.
Yes, for sure. Thank you, Counselor Curry. Through the chair to you. Yes, in the application and policy, we did write that in and it was more the intention that you couldn't use it for a birthday party rental or something like that. But in these times with our COVID restrictions and the only way to access the facility being those household rentals, we were going to allow household rentals to be included in that for the time being and as long as we need to, because that is definitely a barrier right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, I will call the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. And can I get a motion that council approved the withdrawal of $50,000 from the COVID relief reserve to be used to fund the one year community service fee assistance pilot program? Counselor Shannard will make that motion. Any comments or concerns? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we'll have, can I get a motion that council approve ACE's one time seed funding request for their kids in the arts program in the amount of $5,000 to be funded from the COVID relief reserve? Counselor Bevan makes that motion? Any comments or concerns? Counselor Shannard?
Yes, I spoke in favor of this and I'm still in favor of this. We just have to bear in mind, Sarah, if some other similar group comes forward, how much money would we have left? Because I strongly agree what ACE is doing. I know what they're doing, but I'm just looking at if some other organization of equal comes with something similar. Do we have funding to help them if needed and approximately how much?
Through the chair to Counselor Shannard. The COVID reserve is being used quite a lot for our budget that's coming up. You're going to see it next week at the committee meeting. At the moment, we have around 300,000 in there. So with this 50 going out, we'll have about 250 in there with the five going out. It is going down a little bit slowly as as we use it. So I think after this, we would have around 250 to 260 left in the in the COVID reserve.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, did administration find out if we did support kids in sports to the same amount?
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, I could not find anything unless we paid it to something that wasn't called kids in sports. We looked through trying to see if we could find that, but I could not find anything in the past that we have done for the other organization.
Okay, because it has been common to kids in sports. Oh, you know something, Tanya, maybe. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Byer?
Yes, through the chair. All I can tell you is in in my last five years that I've been with the town, we haven't provided any funding to Edson Kids in Sport. And it's my understanding it was primarily funded through corporate donation. So and then, of course, there's Jump Start, but that's funded through Canadian Tire.
Counselor Curry?
Just clarifying that we're going is Just clarifying that we're going, is the plan to support this, but still have an application process in the sense of, or some kind of measurement outcomes back to us? I know we had discussed that at the meeting, so just the plan to provide, I'm in full support of this. I think whether we did Kids in Sport or not, we did the Boys and Girls Club, we did the youth group, we did all of those, which all had the same goal in mind. So I think this is something we've regularly done in our community to different organizations, and we currently do for seniors groups and other different groups right now. So just the question of, are we asking with this funding, when we give it out, are we asking for just some outcomes to be given to us afterwards, or just some reporting back?
Ms Byers?
Although it doesn't fit with our community development grant process or the criteria, I guess, I, I still do highly recommend, you know, approving this $5,000 for seed money. The, the thing is, we, even though it doesn't fit the community development grant criteria, it doesn't mean we can't use the same outcomes measures and the reporting. And so our team would be happy to, you know, I guess, just stay with ACEs and see how they're making out, and, and obviously collect that, that information and work with them on outcomes, so that we can get some valuable information back.
Councillor Bevan?
Yeah, when ACEs came and done the presentation to us, Mr Taylor was said he would be able to provide us with just about anything council would ask and that, and he would be following every penny very closely in that, too. So he said, anything we want to know, ask, he will give us what he has in that, and we make sure that we are kept in the loop. And I do support this, because not, like I said before, not every kid is in hockey or sports or stuff like this and that. We have a good community here, diverse in that, and everybody has to find their own way. Thanks.
I will give my comments, I am in support of this as well. I love the fact that we can target the, the families that need it the most, and I think it's a very modest request, so I'm in full support. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call a vote, all in favor. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I get a motion that council suspend penalties on unpaid utility accounts until the bills due August 25th, 2021, and give utility customers until the end of 2021 to pay unpaid balances? Councillor Wilkinson makes that motion. And is there anything to report on CEO Bitner?
Not really, this is also similar to what we did last year and talked about last week committee. The utility bills, we won't put any penalties on until that one due August 25th, and even from then on, it's only on new balances, we wouldn't penalize on, on previous balances. They will also have until December to catch up. Usually, if unpaid utility bills get transferred to taxes, we will be suspending that until the end of December, to give people time to catch up.
All right, any comments or concerns? All right, I'll call a, I'll call a vote, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you very much. We have no information items, no sundry items, we'll move on to council committee reports. I'll just start at the top of my screen, Councillor Wilkinson, can you go first, please?
Yes, I, I believe we go back to March 17th, anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we had a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Meeting, where we did choose a business that met the RFP criterion. And on March 17th, we had a Zoom meeting regarding our new chief administrative officer. March 18th, I had an Evergreens meeting regarding our funding of 2.25 million for Victor Lake in Grand Cash and where we were going from there. March 23rd was a Cow meeting, and March 25th, we had a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Meeting again. Thank you.
Councillor Shannard?
Okay, I'll start with the Zoom CEO, because I don't have the date, but the same as Councillor Wilkinson. And then on March 23rd, we, I attended the Cow. And on March 22nd, which is ironic for me, because I fought hard with other people to get traffic light, and then through TransCanada Board on the Alberta rep, I was invited to Zoom on a meeting for caucus, the Standing Committee for the Private Bill, Members' Bill, Bill 213 Traffic Safety Law to increase the speed limit to 120. So it was, you did a five, five-minute presentation, and then you're on the hot seat for 25 minutes. So some of the questions they throw at you, you really have to think about it, like they had questions on enforcement, they had questions testing your skill on if the speed limit's ever been changed. So TransCanada, this thing was, our main view was, they were concentrating on Highway 2, of course, we're Highway 16, and our biggest argument was for tourism. So we lobbied on tourism, and a lot of times, like one of my points were, when people are planning a trip, they always look at time, when an increased speed limit, therefore your travels through Alberta would, would be quickened. So it was very interesting, I was, I wish I would have been there in person. For, some of them had tough, tough questions, you're on, on the spot, you have to answer them. As it moves forward, I will be invited back to help in it. So if we can make the speed limit to 120, I can say I was part of it, and that's it for my report.
Councillor Curry?
All right. On March 17th, also had that meeting, a quick Zoom meeting about the new CAO. Cow meeting on March 23rd, and then on the 25th, I had the Community Futures, West Yellowhead, sorry, I guess, I'm just looking at my notes here. Excuse me, they got through all of their RFP applications and everything, or RF, sorry, lots of them are on vacation now. I will send out, sorry, they did update us all that, they had loans applications coming in right up until the end. So they have been super, super busy. A couple fun things, let's, you know, not COVID-related fun things, still planning for Lemonade Day, Lemonade Day is still on the table, get your kids signed up, fingers crossed, evil COVID doesn't ruin it. But they are doing great for sponsorship, and it is all across the region, so we do expect Edson Children and Youth to represent and show them, especially Hinton, how great we are. One really cool thing that I did ask, once it's set up for us, that they would be willing to share and discuss with other nonprofits, is having a health and safety person directly working for Community Futures, she has created an ONH, OHNS policy for the organization that is phenomenal, and includes for the pandemic and everything, it is quite an amazing policy document. So that is Deanna, and I have asked that, kind of once that's done and it's been approved, if other nonprofits could kind of see that, because it is a very, especially for a nonprofit established one, because they have someone that directly works with them on that. And then on that same day, I had, and all that, Councillor Bevan might have something more to add to that, on the same day, I had the Edson Historical Society meeting. Well, they were open a little bit, they were open for a little tiny window, I believe that has just been ended today. But they, they've been busy, busy, they've been trying to adapt in ways that worked with everything that's been going on. They have, surprisingly, lots for, lots of sponsorship for the Edson Tourism, Edson and Area, Yellowhead County Tourism, package that they do every year, so they've had lots that is getting done, so we will see that. They were hoping, word on the street is museums would be busy this summer, so fingers crossed that they get to reopen. One of the really cool things they have done recently is, with everything going on, they have created a escape room in a crate, and so it'll be a COVID-friendly rentable escape room. It's amazing, it's amazing. They're still planning one day to be able to open the escape room downstairs, but it will be, schools will be able to rent it, but also families will be able to rent it and use it at home, and then it can be cleaned in between. So the ladies there are just still going hard, which is amazing. One thing that I think we should be aware of, and just making sure, you know, any way we can support them, they are still having quite a bit of damage done on the outside, just the back deck is kind of becoming a place that has been a little bit of a safety issue, and they don't mind people sleeping there, but unfortunately, there has been some needles and blood and such. So just a little bit of trying to figure out right now, ways to establish a, a way to make it safe, so that the workers, and, and of course, anybody playing in the park don't, doesn't run into that. So just something maybe for our enforcement team, too, I know you're still here, Mr Shram, I believe, just any ways that we can support to keep that area safe. And that is my update.
Councillor Bauer?
Thanks, mine's short, I had a few meetings rescheduled. March 17th, I had the CAO Zoom meeting that was short, and March 23rd, the Committee of the Hall meeting, and that's all I've got to report today.
Councillor Bevan?
Thank you, Chair, I'm back, I'm not, I think I know what Councillor Curry probably reported on, so, but I don't know if she's reported on the Smart Start program at all. And that, and the, what it is in 2021, they're launching a third year of their program, Smart Start, which will increase the odds of success for new and young business during those critical years. It's an eight-month entrepreneurship training program to advise tools, business, and planning for a mentor. With a mentor, the program is also open to existing businesses, owners in operation for less than five years who wish to maintain or grow their businesses. This program was designed by entrepreneurs for entrepreneurs, is available to all entrepreneurs with ideal and look at determine affordability and financial for us business. Smart Start's goal contributes to the creation, continuation, expansion of businesses in our region. We have here two businesses in Edson, which, this first business here, the lady says, I had an opportunity to work with Smart Start program as a student in 2019, 2020, and I'm going to be a mentor in 2021. And that's from Jessica Hirsch, and that, I guess she is out of Hinton, I believe. The other one is from Henry Vision Clinic, he had the pleasure of participating in the Smart Start program as a member for the fall of 2020 to present, and he is willing to do it again, and that's from Colin Henry, owner of Henry Family Vision in Edson. So it has taken off for them, they are looking forward to doing this again, and if you want more information, you go to Community Futures, and they will give you all the information you need. And I suggest, if anybody's looking, please sign up and come and talk to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and welcome back, Mayor Zehra, would you like to do your committee report?
Sure, thank you Deputy Mayor Sorensen for filling in for me. I had the CAO meeting, I believe that was on the 17th, as well, on the 17th, attended the Chamber of Commerce AGM. And installed the new executive, 23rd Committee of the Hall meeting. On the 24th, joined regional mayors, as well as mayors throughout the province, on a discussion about the safe rest areas in Alberta Transportation, looking at commercializing those, those areas, and as council is aware, we, we did join a letter that was sent out here last week by all the mayors, sharing concerns of commercialization in rural areas when we have businesses that need support very nearby in the urban communities. And we're still waiting a response for that. On the 30th, I had a meeting with MLA Long about local issues, then today, had a meeting with Dr Hinshaw, Alberta Health Services, the Emergency Management Agency, about the variant P1 here in Alberta. They have assured me that they do believe that they do have the situation contained, that the risk to, for community spread is, is fairly low. Obviously, they are concerned about variants and the rising cases with the restrictions that were announced today. They did acknowledge that they should have communicated with the municipality, and hopefully we see some improvements there. Mayor Michaels from Hinton was there, as well as representatives from Drayton Valley and MLA Long, and I want to thank MLA Long for reaching out to Alberta Health last night and sharing our concerns with, with officials. So we had some really good discussions, CEO Bitner joined me on that call as well. CEO Bitner, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm not really your worship, I, I found it really interesting to hear, you know, the, the amount of time it takes to discover a variant, and then discover which variant, which, which leads to a lot of that delay, and, and anyone's kind of finding out where it actually is, so I thought that was quite an interesting piece.
Yeah, so just to, to give you further information on that, once they determine a COVID case, it goes through a second series of testing for the, the UK variant or the B variants. And then after that, it has to go for a third round for the P1, there's different methodology used for that testing. So it took two weeks to find out that it was a P1 variant, so there is some delays there, so. And obviously, our, our main concern are with those that are impacted by this, and our thoughts and our prayers are with them. And I was just on a call about immunization in the province with Minister Mackyver, as well as Dr Hinshaw and officials with Alberta Health Services. So far, 374,400 doses have been administered across the province. They are going to be launching rapid vaccination clinics in the major cities, they believe they'll have everybody in Alberta with their first dose of vaccinations by the end of June, possibly sooner. As well, they did confirm that household rentals will be able to continue at leisure centers, municipal leisure centers. So that's certainly good news as well, so I think they'll be providing us with some written confirmation on that, so. And the critical need to continue with the protocols in place, that's my report.
Right, before I go, Councillor Curry, you had your hand up?
Sorry, I was just going to clarify, just so anybody knows, as soon as you get a positive test result, all in, all contact tracing, all contact, all isolation orders are given instantly, there's not a timely, time delay ever between that and the variant. That is why often people get multiple calls, because the variant test comes back later. But the instant you get a positive result, we are contacting AHs contacts and has people isolating, so there's not a two-week delay between that aspect, just to be really clear on that.
Thank you.
I, I should also mention that contact tracing has been very intensive with this P1 outbreak, which I was heartened to see, and, and great, great to see that work being done by Alberta Health Services.
All right, my report, March 17th, at West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority Meeting, that same day, I had the Chamber of Commerce AGM as well. March 23rd, a Committee of the Hall meeting, and March 31st, I had another West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority meeting to meet the new Moreview Management Consulting Group, who are awarded the RFP to handle the change in, in governance of that group over the next few months, so we're looking forward to that, and we just had a meet and greet with them, Zoom meet and greet. So that's my report. And Mayor Zehra, would you like to take over for the last item?
Deputy Mayor, you might as well just continue, since it's pretty much the end of the meeting.
Can I get a motion that we move into a closed meeting session for third-party potential legal matters, point 16 and 17?
My apologies, before we make this motion, can we just ask if there's any media or questions?
Sorry, I missed that.
No problem.
Yes, is there any question from media and public regarding the items of this meeting?
We do have Adrian here with us.
Okay, great.
Good evening, I, two probably fairly quick questions. Through the chair to probably CAO Bitner, I would think, with regards to the deferred tax deadline, how many residents or how many tax accounts do you think that will impact? Or will take advantage of?
Oh, that's, it's hard to say how many will take advantage, but obviously, it's open to every taxpayer. We send out around 5,000 tax notices every tax season. Last year, it was, there were, I, I don't have a percentage, but there was quite a number that, that took advantage of that, we were looking at our, at our balances at the end of September, but most had caught up by, by the end of December.
Okay, and thank you, and then further to that, how does this, or does this impact those that are on the TIPS program?
Right, there is, if you're on the, what we call the PAP, Pre-Authorized Payment Program, you will remain on there unless you contact the office and inform us otherwise. Same with the utility bills, we also have a pre-authorized payment with that, people will remain on there unless they call the office. We have flyers- Uh, people will remain on there unless they call the office, we have flyers that have gone out in the utility bills, or will go out in the utility bills tomorrow. Um, there'll also be that information in, in the tax notices when we send those out in May.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, is there any other questions, uh, Kayla?
I did not receive any questions.
All right, can I get a motion that, uh, we move it to a closed meeting session for third-party potential legal matters point sixteen and seventeen? Councilor Shannard makes that motion, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, welcome back, we have left our camera meeting, and, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilor Bevan will make that motion, all in favor? Unanimous. See you later, thank you very much, everyone.
Everyone.